If you'd stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please silence your cell phones if you haven't already and meeting documents are next to Commissioner Kelly and listening devices are going to be with Ken this week. I will go ahead and get started with routine.
For personal privilege?
Certainly.
Two years ago today, I was up in Minneapolis laying in a hospital bed waiting for a new heart and was transplanted this day, so the reason I bring it up is the importance of the donor program. And if you're not a donor now on your license, I hope you will really consider it. It's a life-saving issue.
Thank you, Dick. And we're glad you're having an anniversary here today.
And how many of you are donors? I am. Wow, great. That's cool.
We'll go to routine business and item one.
Item one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any changes? If not, those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item two is to approve the county commission minutes of July 9th, 2013.
Motion approved.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any corrections or comments? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $551,928.33.
Move the bills.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the bills with a comment. Commissioner Barth?
Mr. Chairman, I normally talk about the larger bills that we have in the weekly cost and today I'm going to just mention a couple of smaller ones. There are 17 depositions for $518. Every week we are sued, taken to court by the hospitals in town for indigent expense. And if they didn't sue us on these things, we wouldn't have to have stenographers taking depositions and this is just another one of the small bills that we get. Also today, we have 34 people that we're paying the rent for with the total being $14,950. And I don't have a total, but there's also another 100 individuals that got mental health services at county expense. Certainly there are bigger bills that we get on a weekly basis, but this is what fills in the other gaps and uses all our money.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other comments about the bills? If not, we have a motion and a second to approve. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item four are reports. The Minnehaha County Regional Juvenile Detention Center report for June 2013 has been received and is placed on file in the auditor's office. Item five is personnel. A is to approve the routine action.
We have a motion to approve routine action.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Kerry? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
There are no applications for abatement today. The next item are notices and requests. The first reading and authorize county auditor to publish a notice of hearing to consider a petition to vacate a public road right-of-way. Pat Herman.
Good morning, Commissioners. Pat Herman from Minnehaha County Planning. We have before you today a petition that has been submitted to vacate a portion of road, Genie Drive. It's located in the Hartford Heights subdivision and you can see it on the map there with the red stripe indicates the road. This was platted in 1977. It was never constructed and since then, the neighbors have added some trees and some landscaping to this area and taken it over, so they would like to vacate the road. This part of the street is in our joint plating jurisdiction with the city of Hartford and I heard Friday, and just wanted to let you know the date has changed. Hartford will also have to hold a public hearing and they want to hold it after the county commission has a public hearing and so they have changed their date to August So today I'm before you asking for the authorized, to authorize the auditor to publish a notice of a public hearing for the street vacation and the public hearing would be at 9:15 a.m. on August 13th at your regularly scheduled meeting. Happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions for Pat about the notice? If not, can I have a motion to approve the notice of public hearing on August 13th?
So moved.
You have a motion to approve and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item B is to authorize the county auditor to publish a notice to bidders for Minnehaha County Highway Project MC 121 STR-13. Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, DJ Boothby asked me to handle this one for him. He's currently in a meeting. This is a notice to bidders for to replace two existing structures on Highway 121. You will recall, we already have two structures on 121 that are under construction right now and hope to be finished. These will be for the last two bridge structures on 121 and that if you authorize this notice to bidders, the notice, we will open bids for this on August 7th and then at which time then we'll bring the project back to you for a formal wedding. But this will complete the bridge reconstructions that are needed on 121 across Slip Up Creek.
Thank you, Ken. Anyone have any questions for Ken? If not.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to publish the notice. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
There are no planning and zoning notices today. The next item is petition for compromising lien. John Pecus.
Thank you, Cindy. This is on DPNO 56419, the amount of $399.20. The applicant currently is attempting to compromise the lien upon payment of $200, roughly half. The individual requests this even though there is no real estate involved. He believes that the $336.20 charged was for public defender services back in 2010 and that they were in fact excessive. He acknowledged that $63 from a previous court-appointed attorney service was in fact his responsibility. The applicant indicated that he met with the public defender only one time before retaining private counsel. He received a time expenditure report from the public defender's office that indicates that staff worked on his file a total of 4.1 hours and that the time was billed at the rate of $82 per hour totaling to 836.20. The lien had been turned over to our collection agencies and the collection agency indicated that if in fact we agree to compromise the application, we'll be in communications with our collection agency. The applicant currently lists no assets and debts of approximately $23,000 consisting primarily of student loans. Indicate that he was recently released from the Department of Corrections custody and would like to have this lien resolved. He is working construction currently and the information that I was able to obtain, apparently he was in fact convicted of a Class I Berg and one of the other ancillary issues prior to this was that there was a suspended imposition of sentence, which means that on a prior felony charge, he had time hanging over his head. As long as he was good, this would drop off his record. Unfortunately, the burglary occurred in the time span in which he was not allowed to have any sort of violative actions and because of that, there was a question related to imposing the suspended imposition of sentence related to another felony, a grand theft. So there were apparently communications between state's attorney's office, his previous attorney and his new court-appointed attorney. So I think that somewhat unravels the riddle. However, in this particular instance, because he is willing to make a payment of half or over half, I'll make the motion, but I don't know if I'm going to get a second. I don't have a lot of sympathy.
Thank you, John. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it with a comment.
Commissioner Hybarger?
I'm just adding up what has been paid and what was billed to him and he's paid about 75% of what his original bill was and that was the reason for my second.
And that's accurate.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly.
Kirsten, do you know, was he, his private attorney, was that court-appointed or was it self?
On the, on the second charge that we've been talking about, I believe he retained private attorney. So no, it wasn't indigent defense as far as I can tell.
Any other comments?
Well, just, I'll go ahead.
Commissioner Barth?
I just feel that our public defender is underestimated in their efforts on this and by the applicant and I really, I just don't believe that he's accurate in his criticism of them. I know that they put in the time that they, that they said and if anything, they would probably short the county on that, so I, it bothers me that he's dissing our public defender.
Commissioner?
Well, once again, we got public defenders being thought of as the public, as their attorney and coming back, they're already a deeply discounted, I believe what is it, $80 or $85 an hour was always charged.
Two-thirds.
So I, I'm not going to support this, but I, again, it's a case of on crimes like this, that we should, we should make them pay their, their full deal. I know he hasn't got any money, but he does have a job, so that's all.
Any other comments? Commissioner Barth?
To Mr. Kelly's point, we don't, you know, go and grab them off the job and try to squeeze money out of them. You know, this, this party could make payments for another couple of years and come back to us. It's, it's not, our collection efforts are not onerous and he should be able to get along just fine with this hanging over him for some time.
Thank you. Any other comments? We have a motion and a second to approve the, I would say.
$200.
It's $200. It's not quite half, but about half of the lien and I think we're going to need, Ken, did you have a comment? No. Is the applicant here by chance? I don't think so. Okay. Again, we have a motion and a second to approve a $200 settlement on this compromise. I think we're going to need a roll call vote.
Barth?
No.
Hybarger?
Yes.
Kelly?
No.
Pecus?
Yes.
Bennigan?
Yes. Motion passes three to two. Second item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is on DPNO number 47736 in the amount of $968.80 and DPNO number 53186 in the amount of $710.10. The commission received an application for compromise on two liens because the individuals involved are trying to purchase a home. The first lien is in the name of the husband's name and the second name is in the name of the wife's name. They're requesting both liens be released with no payment. According to their application, they indicated, "We will pay what you think we should." Both liens were incurred for services provided by the public defender and the public advocate's office. Some small payments have been made on both liens. No payments have been received for several years. According to their application, the couple filed for bankruptcy seven years ago and these liens, they thought were discharged in that particular bankruptcy. Now they indicate that the funds were intended to go toward the down payment of a new home. According to the itemized fee worksheet, the couple is purchasing a $280,000 home and will owe approximately $25,000 at the time of closing. The couple lists assets of $49,076.30, including approximately $22,000 in cash and 16 in retirement savings. Liabilities are $6,400, consisting mainly of some credit card debt. According to their 2012 tax return, the individuals had a total income of $65,776 and we're looking at roughly, you know, $1,600 in a lien here. So they're asking, "We'll pay what we think they should pay." The types of charges that were involved in this particular incident related to, I believe there was some drug paraphernalia, I believe there also was a potential for some disorderly conduct. So there were a variety of charges where they've been able to access our public defender's and public advocate's office, which I might add, they currently with these type of assets should not qualify for a subsidized public defender. But I'm glad that these folks were able to move forward after their bankruptcy seven years ago and this is exactly what we want to see in Minnehaha County. People able to move forward and press forward and they seem to be doing very well, but at this particular junction, I'm not willing to make a motion.
Is there any motion from the?
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Kelly?
I'll move to deny.
We have a motion to deny.
Second.
Is there a second? Any questions of?
Well, just, I, I mean, there's, there's a history here of criminal activity and we're talking, you know, home that's hardly above the entry level home or the average home sale with an income that's pretty strong. I see no reason that they can't pay their debts.
We have a motion and a second to deny. Is there any amended motion to pay what they owe? I can't make a motion, but I have one in my mind.
I have a question.
Yes.
If the motion was denied, that means they have to pay. Am I misunderstanding?
If they do pay, I guess I'm going to, would be more specific in telling them that they needed to pay that.
But to buy a home.
Yeah, they won't be able to go through the clothes if they don't pay the lien.
Ironically, and maybe I shouldn't make comments till you're all done, but it's crazy to me that you have somebody who's buying a $280,000 house and only has $25,000 left in a mortgage after the closing.
Right.
And is arguing about a $780 legal payment or some criminal activity.
Was there a question about the effect of the motion?
Yes.
The effect of the motion is basically as if the application was never submitted, so it just isn't a requirement that they pay it, but in practical purposes, if they want to go through with the closing, they may have to.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Could I ask what motion you would like made?
No, I'd be happy with the legal description of our state's attorney. I think we're going to need a roll call vote on this one also.
Barth?
Aye.
Hybarger?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Pecus?
Yes.
Bennigan?
Yes. Motion passes five to zero to have the motion denied and the lien is still outstanding.
The next item is opportunity for public comment.
This is a time for anyone who would like to make a comment about any item that's not on the agenda and I believe we have Mr. Tupper here this morning who would like to talk to us. Good morning, Rick.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to swing by. It's a great opportunity to talk to you where I don't have anything to ask for or what I want to bring to your attention is a great event that we're going to be hosting here in Sioux Falls. One that I think we all have a vested interest in just because it involves our freedom and the history of our country. A group has been established in Sioux Falls called the Commemorative Air Force and that's who I'm representing today. The Commemorative Air Force is a national group that's mission is to restore and fly military aircraft and also more importantly, recognize the men and women that flew those aircraft and maintained those aircraft through history. The squadron that we're establishing in Sioux Falls is, is going to take on the name of the Joe Foss Squadron, which I think is important for us. Will be at the Joe Foss Field and also the, the piece of history that Joe Foss played for not only our nation, but our state and our city. So the Joe Foss Squadron is being stood up in Sioux Falls. We're going to do it right. We're going to do it big and we want to make sure everybody knows about it. We have a great event that we've got planned for August 12th. It's a Monday. The National Commemorative Air Force is really stepping up and supporting us greatly with this event. There are several World War II aircraft that will be in Sioux Falls during that event and for three days. One primarily being, and I'm going to throw out a bunch of numbers and letters for you, but one is a B-29. Fifi is its name. It is the only flying B-29 in the world. It's a four-engine bomber that is the style that dropped the atomic bomb to end the war. So we will have that in Sioux Falls in, just to kick our new squadron off. They're also bringing in a B-24 and I know Dick had mentioned some stuff about seeing a B-24 and, and some history with that and several other World War II aircraft include the P-51 Mustang. I just confirmed our second P-51 Mustang yesterday and we're working with the owner of that aircraft right now to raffle a ride on that. And if you're interested in flying in the back of a World War II fighter, it's awesome. I had a chance to do it last summer. I probably won't do it again because it didn't go so well for me, but I can say I did it. And it's a great opportunity for people to see, see a piece of history and to get up and touch it. These aircraft are all in, they're, they're very old, they're, they're built in the 1940s. One of the things that we do to champion around is we are in the process of purchasing an L-5, which is a little two-seat liaison aircraft that the military used through the World War II. This is, we're in the process of looking for sponsors and we're about halfway through purchasing this. The L-5 will be here on August 12th. We've already got a pilot lined up to ferry it up to Sioux Falls the first week of August and we're going to also raffle a ride in this plane. It's a little slower, a little more cramped, but still fun. So we've got some great things. We're going to do a swing dance. We've got a 13-piece 1940s band that will be out there. It's going to be totally a 1940s theme, so you'll have a chance to come out and do a little dancing with the backdrop of a B-29 sitting right behind the hangar. So we invite everybody to come out. We hope that people, you know, we're going to advertise this and market it to the community. There's some great opportunities to meet some World War II veterans and just be a, you know, the biggest piece for me is the message that, you know, we're never going to forget what people have done for us. And, you know, this weekend, there were a couple of World War II aircraft up at Landmark and I went up and had the opportunity to watch a couple of World War II veterans walking out and, you know, these gentlemen were in their early 90s and when you look at them and they see their plane, you get that sparkle in their eye and you can just see the memories coming back to them and, and they're good memories, even though it was a difficult time for them. It was fun to watch them and just see that emotion come back. So what we want to do is make sure that, you know, we want people to remember that and we want people to remember these folks and we're going to start off this, with this big event. So we just want to make sure that you're all aware of it and invite you out and enjoy it.
For the record, if you would please, Rick, would you give us your name and address since I forgot to do that, even if I don't?
Certainly. My name is Rick Tupper. I'm here representing the Commemorative Air Force. Home address, is that what you want?
Either one.
9208 West Norma Trail, Sioux Falls.
Thank you, Rick. Comments, Commissioner?
Yeah, and I was just going to point out that B-24 is the type of aircraft that Dick's dad used to fly and I think that's also the same type of aircraft that George McGovern flew in World War II. You, you had mentioned earlier, there's a possibility we could get an F-4F. What's the, what's the significance of an F-4F here?
If you look at the diagram that I put on there, the patch that we have for the Commemorative Air Force, what we did is we designed the patch historically, the Joe Foss Squadron, we look at the two cards, the first, the ace card represents that Joe Foss was an ace. He earned that ace recognition and his Medal of Honor flying the F-4F Wildcat, which is the picture in the other card, the F-4F Wildcat. There's only four or five of them flying in the world and we have the opportunity right now that we may have one of those on the ground in recognition of, of his Medal of Honor and what he did during the war as well. We're working on that. We hope we get it here and it's, it's looking greater than not that we'll have it here, but I can't commit 100% to it.
Commissioner Kelly?
Well, just to know, when I went out to see the 24 this last weekend, there was, I think most of those veterans were in wheelchairs, but after crawling through that bird, I can understand why they wouldn't get in anyway. I talked to one gentleman, he was looking up and I said, "You fly in the 24?" And he said, "Yeah, I was a tail gunner and he was up there. He just sat there looking at it." But a little note, about 20 years ago, my father and I and another guy went down, had a chance to go through the Confederate Air Force Museum, which is down in Harlingen at the time. I don't know where it is now. And all the aircraft had nose art, if you'll remember, on the bombers. And so they had a nose art display of about three bombers that they had salvaged, the, the whole area where the nose art was and we're walking through and the plane that Dad was on was called sloppy but safe, but the nose art was there and we had no idea. And it was rather interesting to watch Dad after seeing that, what, some 30 or 40 years after the war. I commend you. This is a great thing. I think the 51 was the second aircraft that the guard flew out here, wasn't it, Rick?
That's correct, yes.
And it's really important to retain this and this, the history is kind of ignoring past sacrifices and I think this is a great way to, to keep it at the forefront, so.
Yes, two additional comments I'd just like to make quickly for you. I had the honor of co-chairing the Honor Flight Program, which we started in 2008 and during that time, we flew 12 flights of World War II veterans to Washington DC. Every flight was truly an amazing experience for me and, you know, it's really what drives home is that these little old men and women that, you know, we might stand behind in the grocery line, you just don't know what piece they played in history and that's right in our own communities. And when I looked at the veterans that were on that flight and I heard their stories and what they saw and what they participated in, it's, it's events like this that we want to make sure that people don't forget that. It's not just the little old guy that lives next door to you or the little, little lady that's slowing you down in the registry line. It's, they played a role in why we're here and, and what allows us to be here. So we want to drive that home, that there's a lot of people out there that sacrifice for us every day and we're not going to forget them.
Thank you, Rick. That's a wonderful project and I know you'll be successful and we'll stay in touch.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Rick. For being here. Any other public comment? If not, we'll go to the next item on the agenda.
It's regular business. Item 10 is to authorize the chairman to sign an agreement between Minnehaha County and the Septico Department of Corrections to house state work release inmates. Jeff Cromer.
Jeff Cromer, I'm the warden at the jail. I'm just here regarding the contract to house DOC inmates at the correction center. This contract is just an extension of the contract that we currently have in place with no changes.
Anyone have any questions or comments for the warden?
Keep them coming.
I'm not sure that we want them coming quite as fast. Evidently not. Is there a motion or second?
I'll make a motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the contract. Any questions? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you, Jeff.
Item 11 is to authorize the chairman to sign construction services agreement with Infrastructure Design Group for Project MC 121 STR-13. Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, this particular agreement is specifically related to the notice to bidders contract that you just, just did here just earlier this morning and that this is for the two bridge structures that we will take bids on for construction. This particular contract is for the construction management services associated with that project and that it will, it's with IDG Group and it covers, excuse me, construction engineering and inspection of those two structures to include staking, materials inspection, construction staking, shop drawing review, progress payments and post-construction engineering services for the project and that the contract's in the amount of $74,517. And DJ recommends approval of this agreement.
I walked in.
Okay.
DJ, do you have any additional comments?
No, Ken handled it. We're good.
You know, if he stays around here long enough, he'll get his job right, I'm sure. Any questions of Ken or DJ?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Thank you, guys.
Item number 12 is a discussion of sponsoring, supporting and the application of one Minnehaha County employee to the Leadership Sioux Falls 28 program. Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, Leadership Sioux Falls through the Chamber of Commerce is receiving applications for that program and in years past, the county commission, within the county commission budget, has sponsored a, the application fee for one county employee, for you to sponsor that employee for the Leadership Sioux Falls program. It's not a guarantee that the person will be accepted, et cetera, but as part of the application process, it's, it's required that there's a sign-off that, yes, that that sponsoring person will in fact be responsible for the tuition. And so I bring this to you again to see if you are once again interested in serving as a sponsor for a county employee to attend. Now in years past and that typically we've been, I don't know, I don't want to say fortunate or lucky, but we've generally had just one candidate that's been interested to, to go for it. or lucky, but we've generally had just one candidate that's been interested to go for it. This year, I am aware of potentially two persons that are interested in applying for the program, and we can handle this one of two ways, and that, you know, again, this is not to say that the Leadership Sioux Falls program wouldn't take two, but perhaps the department where that person comes out of would be responsible. But we can, we can cross that bridge when we get to it. But my main thing here today is just simply if you are still willing to participate in this program and agree to be a sponsor of a county employee to the program.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Kelly?
I was involved in that program for a long time, and
And I still am.
It's a, it's a great program. If you look at the graduate list, it's kind of a who's who of what Sioux Falls is right now. You'll notice that the five or whatever it is, county employees that have been there are still working for the county. These are top management people. And I think it's an important program. It's an opportunity for the county to get, you know, for our employees and our key employees to get involved with what will eventually be the leadership of Sioux Falls. And I would encourage the commission to continue it. I would hesitate to put two names in. I was on that selection board for many, many years, and I know that, you know, you usually got about 50 to 75 applicants for 30 positions. They're very careful about, you know, how they handle that, because there's a lot of pressure from a lot of companies. I think your, our best opportunity would be to have a selection committee within the county and then send that person's name forward. They would probably have a pretty good likelihood of getting it. I don't think we've ever submitted one that hasn't been accepted.
Any other comments? If not, I would also endorse what Dick said. I was lucky to participate in it a number of years ago. I do think one person's probably an appropriate amount, because I think they always have more applicants than they have spots. And I don't think that they would take more than one from the county. I'd be surprised, but
I would be shocked if they took more than one.
Yeah, I would be too. But it's a worthwhile program in learning about what's going on in this community, and it's a good training for all of us. So I would endorse.
Do you need a motion on this, or?
Yeah, I think we would.
I would move to, again, sponsor a candidate this year.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve a candidate. Any other comments? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item 13 is to authorize the chairman to sign a notice of awards, special conditions, assurances, and certifications for the FY 2011 Juvenile Accountability Block Grant, JAVG, in the amount of $52,316 for the LSS Middle School Diversion Officer and VOA Community Service Program. Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, back in May this year, you authorized the submission of a grant proposal to the Council of Juvenile Services in the amount of the $52,316. And the grant funds were to be used to support the activities of the LSS Middle School Diversion Officer, which has been a program that's been in place for, I believe this is the third, if not fourth, year going forward, and the VOA Community Service Program. We did receive notification this past week that the council had approved that grant, and what you have before you are the official documents that are required to sign the notice of award, the grant conditions, et cetera, and all the reporting requirements. So we are asking that, consistent with your authorization to submit the grant, we're asking for your authorization for the chairman to sign up on these acceptance documents for the grant.
Any questions of Ken? Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the grant. There's no other questions. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item 14 is to authorize the chairman to sign agreement with Jensen Electric to replace transformer pole for $9,149.40 at the WH Lion Fairgrounds. Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, this is consistent with what we told you that we would do going forward. You'll recall that you had approved $20,000 in the building fund this year for some asphalt work down at the fairgrounds, and that you did approve a reallocation of those particular dollars with the caveat that we bring these to you as they come up, you know, so that the fair could use that money for other purposes, because the city was, had already donated significant asphalting for the fairgrounds. But this agreement is for is to replace a transformer, and that which they consider to be a maintenance need out at the fairgrounds. It's with Jensen Electric in the amount of $9,149. That would come out of that $20,000 allocation. And for your information, the only other project that's come out of that $20,000 that I'm aware of is the one that you approved here a couple weeks ago with Turvis Plumbing to replace a water valve something or other out at the expo building. So again, we're just bringing these to you just so that you keep aware of what the reallocation for that asphalt work is being used for.
Thank you, Ken. Any questions of Ken? If not, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the
I do have a quick question. Just, are we, Mr. Chair, certainly. So are we replacing the pole with a buried pedestal? Is that the idea, or is it a new pole going in?
It's on the ground.
It's underground? It's all underground?
I think it's on the ground.
No, I don't think it's underground.
No, this is not underground, and that this is, it'll be complete with the guy wires and the transformer on the pole, et cetera.
Okay.
I think most of the fairgrounds has quartz underneath it. You don't go too far underground.
No.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item 15 is Minnehaw County Commissioner Liaison Reports.
Does anyone have any liaison reports this morning? Any liaison reports? If not, any new business? I have one item of new business. Scott, I received an email about our infamous shooting range by crooks or by Corson, and frankly, a little disappointed in the pictures I saw. I think I would like for you to do some research on that. I believe that violates their conditional use permit.
Indeed. I got the same email, and it was forwarded to Jeff. I have already gotten a written statement from the person that attended the, I met with him this morning.
Okay.
The person that actually witnessed the occurrence. I have pictures that he took, and I have downloaded it. I contacted Kirsten yesterday to sort of, because this is sort of a little bit of a sticky wicket, I wanted to make sure that I followed a procedure that we're all going to be comfortable with, that was legally appropriate, and so I contacted Kirsten. He gave me some wise counsel, and I began investigation. And as part of that investigation, I contacted the person who witnessed the event. He's given me, like I said, he came in this morning, I met with him, he gave me a signed statement with pictures. My next step is I'm going to contact the applicant, the gun club, and bring him in, and we'll talk to them and go from there. And as Kirsten indicated in his email, I'll make a decision, and I think my options are to take it to the planning commission and lay out what I found to the planning commission, and then they can follow a set of options that Kirsten's laid out. So I'd be glad to answer any questions. I proceeded along with this. I was surprised, I was disappointed, but I'm investigating it before I rush to any judgment.
Absolutely. Yep. There's always two sides to a story, but Commissioner Kelly?
When's the next planning commission meeting?
Well, the next meeting would be next Monday, but they, we could not get them on that. It would have to go to the August meeting, because we would need to publish hearing and go through a process, and so we could not get them on. The next meeting they possibly could be brought to the planning commission for any kind of discussion would be the fourth Monday in August, and I don't know exactly what that date is, but
Is there any other recourse we can have to stop them from doing what's not permitted out there, Kirsten? I mean, is there a, this is a pretty serious violation.
I agree.
In the meantime, it's my opinion that Scott, as the planning director, I think our statutes are pretty clear. Scott, as the planning director, has to make a determination after his investigation as to whether, in his opinion, the conditional use permit was violated. If he finds that there is evidence of that, he can bring it to the planning commission, who needs to take the official action. So I think we're constrained by that at this point. However, if someone were there with some authority, I really think the planning commission needs to pass on this before any sort of further action can be taken.
Jeff, Commissioner Barth?
Mr. Chair, you know, the one photo that we had, one thing I noticed was no one was wearing any hearing protection, and so I can't imagine that they were shooting under those conditions, fully automatic, without any. I think that, you know, we will need to find more information, and, you know, obviously there's always two sides to every piece of toast, and let's find out what happened, and then we can take other action.
Well, I agree that the process is set, and I believe you've got good legal advice on what you need to do next, and I think we need to pursue that, and we'll see where it ends after the, all the information's gathered.
And I have begun a investigation of the facts, and I really, I want this well documented, and that's why I wanted something in writing from the person that was there, not from Mr. Ballmas who heard, or Ballmas who heard something occurred. And so, I mean, that doesn't do us any good to have something, "I heard something occurred." So I actually talked to the person that was there, have pictures that he took. He's given me a written narrative of exactly what happened, what he's seen. He signed it. So now my next step, and this all occurred at 8:30 this morning, and I haven't had a chance to get together or contact even the gun club, but I'm doing my investigation, and, you know, the person that brought this forward has provided me, I think, sufficient documentation, and now I will discuss with the gun club what occurred. And Commissioner Barth and I talked yesterday. He, you know, Jeff brought up the fact that they weren't wearing ear protection, and, but according to the person that was there, they were shooting that way without ear protection, because they were silenced, they were silenced guns.
That's, if I may, Mr. Chair. There was an ad in the Argus last week to come out and try your silencers out at their range.
And that's what they were doing.
And they had silencers, I think, for sale as well as to demonstrate. I think you have to get a separate permit from the sheriff in order to own a silencer.
I don't know.
I'm not sure about that. But anyway, we'll do the due diligence, and we'll wait to hear from you. I'm sure we'll have more conversations in the future.
Yeah, and as, you know, Commissioner Kelly, the question he asked is very pertinent. Very next meeting I could take this to would be August, so there's going to be a couple of weeks for me to prepare something, and then we'll have, I'm sure, a lively discussion at the planning commission meeting.
Sure you will.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Any other new business? Any old business?
Just was going to comment that the Baltic Bridge ribbon cutting is tonight at 6:00.
Thank you. Can I have a show of hands who's going to go, so we need to declare this as a public meeting?
I've got it noticed, just in case.
Oh, you do have it noticed? Good. Any other old business? I will remind everybody that we have budget hearings tomorrow night at 6:00. The first conversation will start about the capital improvement program. We have, I think, four potential projects that will be discussed. The mayor will be here, as I understand, and we will ask for his opinion about the archive facility. And then on Thursday morning at 9:00, we need to have a approved preliminary budget. I noticed that Mr. Litz isn't here this morning, but at this point, my preliminary numbers are, and I've done this in my head, and Darlene, you need to correct me if I'm wrong, but we have $1.8 million more in expenses than we have in revenue. Is that correct? You're nodding your head, so I must be close.
Yes.
So we've got some large conversations to have about how we're going to balance the budget, and that is a responsibility that we have, is to be able to balance it. So you need to bring to that conversation Thursday your ideas on balancing the budget.
Mr. Chairman, just a question.
Commissioner Barth?
What is our deadline if we were to choose an opt-out? And I'm not suggesting I support one, but what is that deadline?
Yesterday.
Yeah.
That's passed.
Excuse me for that problem.
Done.
That's one decision we're done with. Any other comments or questions? If not, we'll see you tomorrow night at 6:00 for this capital improvement plan, which frankly has no bearing on the general, led, general budget, if you will. Correct?
That is correct. I mean, the only impact it could be is depending on what you may or may not do with the archive building, you know, as far as shifting some money there. I didn't know, you know, I know it was in the paper again today about money, that is supposedly what the county has at its disposal, and that if you wanted me, I am prepared to answer some of that if you'd like me to.
Unfortunately, I didn't read the paper today, so you're going to have to educate me.
Again, it was, it was, we're funding for outside agencies, and that counties have about 2.3, 2.4 million, and that at its disposal, more than what they had last year in that hand. I can certainly, I think I've pretty much figured out where they've got that information and how it really doesn't jive with what you, what you really have at your disposal for things. So I'd be happy to do that if you want me to.
Yeah, I think for all practical purposes, and Darlene, you could remind me if I'm wrong on this also, but additional funds is more like $900,000.
That's for the general fund.
Yeah, for, yes. So the numbers that have been tossed around, if you will, aren't quite accurate. In fact, they're not even close. So the $2.3 million is a cash number, and compared to last year, it may be some revenue comparisons, but that does not include the issues of federal grants, pass-through dollars, intergovernmental accounts, all those things, so it's not comparing apples and apples.
And a big chunk of that money that they were referring to is our projected increase in the highway fund because of license plate increases.
Right, and that had nothing to do with the general fund.
Nothing to do with the general fund whatsoever.
Yep. We're still down to the bottom line of needing $1.8 million in changes in our revenue or expenses or a combination of both.
That is correct. If you're going to keep it what your cash supply philosophy is, you need that much.
Darlene, do you have any comments? Since you're the hardest working person with that budget?
Not right now.
You're saving all your bullets for later? Thank you. Any other old business? If not, we do need to go into executive session for contract negotiations, legal briefing, and personnel, so we will be here a little bit.
Still moved.
Second. We have a motion to go into exec session. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Let's get back together in five minutes.